The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:01. The Secretary will call roll.
Kentor Barberina is here, Dennis Sabalki.
Here.
Jim Harb.
Here.
John Idsel.
Here.
Rob Dorstavich.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
Bill Pratt.
Here.
And we have the approval of this evening's agenda. I have no additions or corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve this evening's agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The approval of the minutes of our June 20 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the June 20 minutes as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, new business application 2293-0518, use variance review for C1 neighborhood shopping. Ms. Howe, you have your report.
Yes, thank you Commissioners. The application before you is for a use variance review. Typically, as you know, variances are reviewed and considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals at the township. For a use variance in particular, the process that the zoning ordinance requires is that it goes first to the Planning Commission for your consideration and then your comments are passed on to the zoning board of appeals for their ultimate consideration and termination. So outlined in the memo dated June 13 are three main different criteria that the Planning Commission is charged with in evaluating a use variance. The request is for an auto repair facility at 4600 Ann Arbor Trail. The parcel, the subject parcel is less than a quarter acre in size and its own the C1 neighborhood shopping district. So as far as the three criteria, the first being the zoning of the site and whether or not the permitted or the subject proposed use is a permitted or a special land use in that C1 district. On page two of the planning report, you'll see that the intent of the C1 neighborhood shopping district has been provided for at the top of the page. Basically, the intent of this district is to provide neighborhood-serving local commercial operations for those individuals who are residing in the neighborhood's personal services and convenience goods. The table then, in the middle of the page, shows that auto repair facilities are not considered a permitted use in the C1, nor are they considered a special land use in the C1 district. So they are not permitted at all in the zoning classification. The second item for consideration is the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. What is the context today and what is, what has the land been used for historically? To the north and to the south, across from Ann Arbor Trail, which is a local collector road, are single-family residential neighborhoods. It's planned that these areas would remain as single-family as well, which is in align with the third item for consideration, which is the master plan and the future land use map that's associated with the township's adopted plan. This parcel in particular is designated as commercial on the future land use map. And the master plan doesn't describe in detail the types of commercial uses. The master plan does provide goals and objectives that the Plymouth community strives for. This would include substantial buffers between single-family residential and non-residential uses and to reduce commercial development that would negatively impact residential development or alter the residential character of the township. It's also important to note that on the future land use map, all the surrounding existing residential neighborhoods are planned to remain as low-density, single-family residential. So the recommendation this evening is to provide the zoning board of appeals with your consideration and feedback as it relates to the zoning, as it relates to the existing character and conditions of the neighborhood, and as it relates to the compatibility with the master plan and the future land use map. I do believe that the township attorney, Kevin Bennett, is in attendance this evening and has also provided a memo describing more in detail the use variance request process. And if there's anything that you'd like to add, Mr. Bennett, please feel free to. Otherwise, we are both here to answer your questions this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I would just, I would just have a couple of comments. First of all, as Ms. Howe said, this is, this step of the process is simply for the commission to make findings of fact and recommendations to the zoning board of appeals with respect to the request for a use variance with respect to the criteria that Ms. Howe just referenced. Second of all, just with respect to the actual petition itself, there's a legal issue in there that I'd like to bring to the commission's attention. First, it makes reference to Article 27 of the zoning ordinance, Class B, non-conformities. What I would submit to the commission is that Article 27 would not apply to this particular case for the reason that the purpose of Article 27 is to deal with non-conformities that existed at the time the zoning board was adopted, or sorry, the zoning ordinance was adopted in 2004. When the zoning board was adopted in 2004, Article 27 dealt with uses and structures that did not comply with the new zoning ordinances. Those would be grandfathered in under certain criteria that are set forth within that article. That article, however, would not apply to this because in this case, there was a consent agreement that was entered into in 1994, making that the use in 1994 legal at the time the zoning ordinance was adopted in 2004. So the timeframe that's set forth in the use agreement, which is six months for abandonment of the use, would take precedence over what's stated in Article 27. Does the board have any other questions for the commission?
Any questions? Not at this point, but we might come back.
Okay.
Okay. And the applicant is here?
Yeah.
The floor is yours if you'd step up to the podium. The meetings are recorded, videotaped, so.
Everyone hear me? Okay.
You can adjust it up.
Or take it, take it off the cradle.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. We're here today discussing the, the use variance for the property, the aforementioned property. This property is operated as a motor vehicle repair facility since, since the inception of that agreement in 1993.
Sorry, could we have your name, please?
Ryan Dobson. And I'm the attorney for Mr. Sabak. My apologies. It's operated as a motor vehicle facility since at least 1993. My understanding is it was a motor vehicle repair facility before they took it over as well. The use agreement that you see as attached to my petition was in place and it's been, it had been operating as a motor vehicle repair facility for almost 30 years at this point. Well, I guess 25 years, if you want to say. It had been operating almost 25 years in that fashion without any issues whatsoever. I did note in reviewing the, the package supplied with regards to the use variance request that they were concerned with possible noise, the impact of noise on the surrounding neighborhood. There was never any citations prior for littering or noise whatsoever at that residence when it was operating as a motor vehicle repair facility. So we have no reason to believe that there would be issues with that going forward. There are also some issues with the property itself that make it, in and of itself, unique. The property was built, it's built with two garage doors and it has two lifts inside. So it was built essentially for the exact purpose of being a motor vehicle repair facility. It really, truly cannot serve another purpose without either demolition or a very, very costly remodel to make it comply with the requirements within the C1 district. The lifts are all cemented in the ground. I'm sure you've seen lifts similar to that when you take your car into any bell tire or anything like that. Those type of lifts are all, you know, there's two of those for separate bays on the vehicles within the facility. To remove those would be extremely costly as well. With regards to the variance itself, again, I believe, you know, my client had this variance, had the use variance for 25 years without an issue. There's nothing reported. I cannot see, I did not find a single citation in the township's file in regards to any issue that was at that property. I, I do not believe there would be any issues with that going forward in terms of, you know, noise or conflicting with the master plan, as it has already been operating in that fashion and had been for quite some time prior to that. That being said, I, you know, I don't believe it would impact the surrounding residential neighborhoods. I've seen nothing to indicate that there has been any opposition to this. The facility has been in place for quite some times, some time, and it serves some of those residents in that area and provides them, you know, motor vehicle repair services as well. Unfortunately, the way the building is built and the way it is zoned in C1, there is very, very limited uses for what can be done with the building. And that's why we're here today seeking the use variance. And if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them today.
Let me just ask Mr. Bennett a question. So what, the issue that brings this before us is the abandonment of the use of this. Is that what brought this to us?
That's one way you can look at it. According to the records that I was able to, to look at, the, the use was abandoned in 2014 from January to November, which would be over six months. If the, under the consent agreement, if the use was abandoned for more than six months, then the consent agreement is terminated and the property may only be used in accordance with the zoning ordinance. If that is true, then the, the process that the applicant would have to follow would be the process that they're following right now, is to apply for a use variance. A couple of things I would like to state, these are factual issues, not legal issues. From a factual standpoint, I don't know that if any, any citations have been issued, but I know violation notices for the property have been issued. Kathy Pumphrey gave me her file and she had a, a list of, of violation notices. There was a couple from 2017 that involved weeds and high grass, litter, outdoor storage. There was one in 2016 for litter and outdoor storage and parking violations. There was three in 2015, one in 2014. And I didn't go back further than that, but I just would like the record to be clear that I don't know if there were actual citations issued, which is the final step of a notice violation, but there were notice violations issued.
And I would also like to state on that issue, one of the, the, one of the problems with this case is any notices that may have been sent out were sent to the wrong address. So my client never received any, any notice of any, anything whatsoever. We have no reason to believe there was any citations. Obviously, those would still be outstanding. There'd be warrants for their arrest. So clearly, that's not an issue at, at this point. Our concern is mainly with the, the issue in terms of the abandonment of the property. You know, our position is we did not abandon the use and that was something that we had discussed with members of the city in particular. I can't recall names off the top of my head. We are, we opted to follow this process to go through it, to reinstate the, the use variance. I believe it's proper at this point. I do not believe it has had a detrimental impact on the neighborhood and I do not believe there's any citations. And as you can see in my, I set forth in my petition, the, the information that they sent, any notices whatsoever were never even received by my client. If there's anything they wanted them to remedy, they would have been more than happy to do so. And they've relayed that to me on numerous occasions, that they're happy to invest money into this property to upgrade it if there are certain items that need to be done to such. But it's difficult to do that without knowing if they're going to get that variance and being able to use it in the fashion they're seeking to do so. So they need some clarity in that area before they can go ahead and move forward.
May I just make a point of clarification?
It appears that the owner of the property leased it to another company in 2014. And it would appear that the violation notices went to the occupier of the property rather than to the owner.
Questions from the commission?
I would actually agree with that. I would say that's correct.
That is correct.
Yeah. I would say, well, from what I saw, it went to the, the leasee, lessee, the occupant of the property. It did not go to my client, no, or they would have handled it properly.
Yes. Is the property currently or recently been for sale?
No, it is not. To sell it without the, the use variance, the property's value would be hindered by at least $150,000 in our estimation. So essentially, having to sell it is just being zoned to C1 and not being able to use it with the amount of remodeling and reconstruction that would need to go into it to use it as, say, even an average office building. The costs to, basically to sell it, they would lose a substantial amount of money.
Is the building in operation now?
No, it is not. It is not. There, there's no business being run out of it at this time. Everything's being paid on it, obviously, in current, but nothing's being run out of it at this time, no. We're awaiting a ruling on this and the, the use variance.
When is the last time it was used as an auto repair shop?
The last time we had notice of it being used, I believe, was, just a second, I don't I believe it was January of 2017. Was when the lessee vacated the property. And that, and I will say that further complicated the issues because they also, as I pointed out, they left in the middle of the night. They didn't point out, they really didn't give my client proper notice. So I truthfully cannot give you an exact date that they vacated the premises.
But you're, but you're not disputing that it, it did cease to operate for more than six months?
No, we would, we would dispute that because my client did come in, in July of 2017 in an attempt to get the, essentially with another lessee who was willing to lease the property. And he was told he could not lease the property because the property's use agreement had been abandoned.
Other questions or comments?
Was that in 2017 or 2014? Because it was abandoned in 2014. So you said something about 2017, July of 2017?
No, it was, it was 2017. There was, the, it was certainly not abandoned in 2014.
I don't have any personal knowledge of this. I can tell you, I looked at Kathy Pumphrey's records and it indicates that in 2000, January 2014, the premises was vacant. And then in November of 2014, a new company came in and wanted to put banners up, open for business. And there was nothing in between January and November 2014. So I drew a conclusion from that, that it was not used for that purpose. Maybe that's not a fair conclusion, but from the fairly regular reports on the property, I don't think it's an unwarranted conclusion.
Do you have a response to that?
I mean, dating back to 2014, our position is just that it was never, it was not abandoned. The only issue in, that has even brought to my attention regarding abandonment prior to this hearing was the recent, the recent 2017 issue in January. I don't believe there's ever been any mention of anything in respect to an abandonment in 2014 before me seeing this document here today.
Well, did somebody, was somebody occupying the building in 2014?
Uh, yes. Someone was occupying the building in 2014.
And, and 15?
Yes.
And 16?
Yes.
So what we've got here is, is some kind of date snafu somewhere. Because he's saying 14, you're saying 17, and we don't know. Let's, let's back, oh, go ahead.
No, I was gonna ask if by any chance you brought records that show payment of rent during that period?
No, I do not have those records here today.
Or even invoices that would show that it was in operation? I mean.
We have invoices we could provide, but I do not have them here today.
And what was it being operated at?
A motor vehicle repair facility.
So is that the only use that's ever been on that property?
So it's my understanding, you correct me if I'm wrong, what we're here to do is to give the zoning board of appeals, I happen to be the liaison to the zoning board of appeals on this body, guidance as to whether this application fits into the master plan and doesn't disturb the neighborhood and all those kinds of things. It's really up to the zoning board of appeals to decide whether or not they're, that they're able to get a use variance on the, on the thing. And the use variance process is vastly more strict than a, a property variance or a physical variance. So all I, all I'll say about that is, from, from this, from this, this body's perspective, from my perspective, is that it, I don't, you know, the thing has been used as a, as a motor vehicle facility for many, many years. Whether or not it's appropriate is up to the zoning board of appeals or not, not us. I don't think that it disturbs the residential area. I don't think that it's in a, it's in violation of the master plan in any way. It just seems to me that, that we should, we should just move forward and allow the process to, to happen at the zoning board of appeals as it, as it should.
Well, Laura, you're asking, in your report, you're saying that you want us to communicate with the, with the ZBA, the zoning ordinance compatibility, the neighborhood character, and the master plan compatibility. So we can do that tonight, but then this issue about the six months abandonment, and I don't know, Laura or Kevin, you can answer this question. Would it be appropriate, I, that's, that's a big question. So would it be appropriate if they can find proof, positive proof, that the land or the parcel was not abandoned, they could present that to the ZBA?
Then they wouldn't need the variance.
Then they wouldn't need the variance, exactly.
Yes. If there was proof that the property was not abandoned as contemplated by the consent agreement, then the consent agreement would still theoretically apply. However, there is another provision in the consent agreement, and I'm just throwing this out there. I am not the policymaker, just the lawyer, so I'm throwing this out there. There's also something that states that all commercial activities shall be conducted within the building and shall not be conducted outside the building itself. And there's also some other restrictions with respect to parking that I did find in Ms. Pumphrey's notes. And then there's a provision later on that states that any material violations of this agreement would cause termination of the agreement. So I guess it's a factual question as to whether or not the consent agreement is still viable. If the consent agreement is still viable, then a variance would not appear necessary. If the consent agreement is not viable, then this is the process that the applicant has to follow.
So we could move forward then tonight to address the three points, the three recommendations in Ms. Howe's report to us. And then you can take it to the ZBA and sort of hash it out with them as far as the abandonment and some of the other issues that Mr. Bennett has, has raised just now.
That's what I'd, I'd be very appreciative of.
Okay. So we can take it point by point, ask the commission to address those issues about what you're feeling on the zoning ordinance compatibility. And you can see on page two of Ms. Howe's report, the little matrix that she's prepared to kind of guide us through that discussion.
Would it, would it be appropriate for us on point one to say that at, at best, the permitted uses are dubious and not well-defined? And they're, I mean, they're on the, the border of whether they should allow that or not, aren't they?
Well, that's something, I mean, I think the word you used dubious is probably a good It's questionable, in my personal opinion. I don't know, are there other thoughts? Is there general agreement with that?
Commissioners, if I may, I think the strongest element out of these three is, is the zoning classification in that the intent doesn't really speak to these more intensive auto-oriented outside of the neighborhood uses and that it's not expressly permitted in either the permitted by right or the special land use. So from a zoning standpoint, if we were looking at a different parcel that was adjacent to a neighborhood in the C1 district somewhere else in the township, we would not, we would not allow it. They, they could not make an application for this use without requesting a variance or a rezoning to the property. I think that when you get into the essential character and the impact and then the future land use plan, that is where it becomes a little bit fuzzier. With the neighborhood character, there's a judgment implied with that recommendation. And then with the master plan, we only have one category of commercial and it's not well-defined in our, in our master plan. So there's, there's a judgment there as well. And I think what comes into play after that are the goals and objectives of the master plan and is it furthering the township's overall vision for what Plymouth Township sees as appropriate commercial uses that are immediately adjacent to our residential neighborhoods. I would recommend that for the first category, zoning, that it's, it's clear that a, an auto repair facility would not be permitted, you know, as a, as a new build today.
I would agree with that. I'm not sure if other people would agree with that or...
I'm sorry, you said you do or don't?
I do agree with her assessment that if this were a new building coming in to put there, we most likely would not approve it.
I mean, I'm okay in letting it move forward.
You're what?
I'm okay if we want to let it move forward.
Okay.
But don't we still have to make a decision on these?
But don't we still have to make a decision on these three points?
Well, the zoning court...
Well, I, I thought we were supposed to make a recommendation, and we'd say, okay, on point one, that's why I used the word there. It's really dubious as to, or questionable as to whether or not that's valid. And, and explain that under a new circumstance, it certainly would not be permitted, but that's for them to take into consideration.
Well, we can tell, to tell the ZBA that it is not compatible with the zoning ordinance. That's pretty clear, because we would never approve this today if it were a new, a new application. As far as essential neighborhood character surrounding, again, that sort of, you know, judgment, but would, how many people would want to live next to an auto repair facility? There, I mean, there's not proper buffering, I mean, if, if it were in a different zoning district, there would be a lot more requirements that we would have in place, and none of that exists currently. And as far as the master plan compatibility, you know, it's a little unclear what the master plan does is Laura had said about, there's only one commercial, but the vision of the township, it's, it's not parallel to what's being proposed here to have this use variance. So, in my estimation, that's, that's probably the recommendation we should make to the, or the findings that we should make to the ZBA. But then also, they need to determine whether or not the property was truly abandoned for six months by witnessing solid proof, rental receipts or whatever, that the property was not abandoned, because then they wouldn't have to go have the use variance.
Well, I, I don't know that rental receipts may, may mean that somebody paid the rent, doesn't necessarily mean that the business wasn't in operation.
That's true.
So invoices is what I would go back to. If someone had their car worked on, they would have gotten an invoice, and you can prove that it was open. I mean, there, there, the proof's in the pudding, so to speak.
Yeah. If, if there's a question of fact, though, as to whether that business continued to operate...
Was conducted there, yeah.
And, and was not in compliance with the consent judgment, is that, is that an appropriate action for the ZBA, Kevin, to determine? Because it's, it's kind of a, I mean, it's kind of a quasi-judicial.
I, I follow your thought process exactly, and I agree with what you're, you're contemplating. This is an either-or, basically. Either the consent judgment or consent agreement controls, or it doesn't. If it does control, then what we're here for today would be probably superfluous. If it doesn't control, then this is the first step to get a use variance.
Right. But, whether, if they produce evidence, who's the trier fact that would determine? That gets sticky.
It would be, I, I guess, a point of contention, and whichever party was aggrieved could seek redress in the appropriate venue.
Yeah.
So are we in general agreement with what has just been discussed? All right, well, someone make, want to make a motion?
I don't.
Okay.
Because it's going to the body I sit on.
Yeah, it's going to your body. Okay. Anyone else that wish, just to summarize this?
Well, if we make a, let me talk a little bit before we try and work out the exact language, but I, I would say that we ought to mention our, our feelings on each of the three points. Leaving the essential character point is a judgment by the zoning board of appeals, not, not us. And then the zoning portion, that it was, it's clearly not in there. I don't see where the abandonment comes into this, because it, that, that if, if it's not abandoned, it doesn't matter what we say. If it is, if it is determined that it's abandoned, then they should consider the three items. And that, say, the first one is that the, it is not properly, or it's not, use is not proper for the zone that it's in currently, that the essential character criteria would be a recommendation of the zoning board, and the master plan portion is ambiguous. That's really what they've got to decide their, their...
Well, they're, they're, we're giving them, we're giving them our findings. And so if, if there's positive proof that it was not abandoned for six months, this use was not abandoned in six months, then, then there's nothing for the zoning board to do, you know, they just have to see the proof. Our findings, I think, we're all in agreement that it is not compatible with the zoning ordinance, that's pretty clear. As far as the essential neighborhood character, you know, it's sort of a neighborhood commercial area, so this kind of facility is going to generate a lot of noise and exhaust. There, so that's not compatible to a neighborhood use. There's no screening around it, you know, as it would be in a, if it were in a commercial district, you know, where that, this was possible to do, there would be some screening against the adjacent parcels. And as far as the master plan, it is not compatible with the vision stated in the master plan. Because the commercial aspect of it, I would agree, is a little nebulous. But the vision is quite clear. So I think those are the, the three things that could be placed in the motion. You know, as chair, I, I don't make the, the motions, but you can say it's not compatible with the zoning. It, it disturbs the essential neighborhood character and, because of the noise and the exhaust, and it is not compatible with the vision of the master plan. And, and it, and we're unclear as to the abandonment, you know, without proof. So we, we can't speak to that.
Okay, let me try this then.
Okay.
On that, application 2293-0518, that our, our position is that if, in fact, it can be proven that this property was not abandoned by virtue of receipts for work being performed, if it can be found that it was not abandoned, no further action is really needed. However, if it is not proven that they haven't abandoned it, then the three characteristics are that it is incompatible with the, the current zoning, permitted uses. That the essential character is very questionable because of noise and exhaust and the lack of screening on the property the way it exists to be compatible with the surrounding conditions. And that while the, in the master plan, it is not clear precisely, but the vision of the master plan, it is not consistent with the vision of the master plan.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there some... Yeah?
Oh. Can you repeat?
Well, you, you, it's, it's recorded, so when you put the minutes together, you could, you could...
I have it too.
Yeah, you can, Harp.
Support.
I never said I moved.
Yeah. You move, right? You move, yeah, and, and who supported it?
Support.
Harp.
Okay, so move, a move by Commissioner Postel, and it was supported by Commissioner Harp, communicating our findings to the zoning board of appeals.
Who's gonna communicate it? Are we gonna do it in a letter?
The, the planning department will.
Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, well...
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Normally only Bill Pratt makes the complicated decisions.
Find your receipt.
Well, you did good.
I thought you did a fine job.
You did.
You didn't say I moved, and Alex didn't pick up on it.
Ah, okay. Moving on to application 2297-0618, the AAA sign company with the urgent care walk-in clinic. And your report, Ms. Howell?
Thank you. The request before you is for a wall sign in the Ann Arbor Road corridor, the Ark District. The proposed wall sign is at the Commercial Plaza, at the northwest corner of Sheldon and Ann Arbor Road. And it is a, a wall sign for an urgent care establishment, that is, to go into the plaza. This is the same plaza that Mumbai Market applied for a wall sign earlier this spring, if you recall that project. In terms of the zoning ordinance criteria for wall sign evaluation, the sign complies in terms of the, the total square footage of the, the signable area. It's under the maximum and less than 50%. In terms of the height, the sign is in compliance. It will be on the, the front facade facing Sheldon Road and will be at 15 feet in height. Only one sign is proposed as part of this reoccupancy, and that complies with the quantity standard. In terms of projection, wall signs cannot project more than 12 inches from the face of the wall to which it is attached. The diagram that the applicant provided does appear to just meet that just by scaling, although it's not labeled, so the final site plan, or sign plan, excuse me, would need to have that projection detail labeled, but that's a minor administrative detail. And then the last item for consideration is panel signage. It's not clear from the proposal if the letters will be separate, freestanding, individual letters, or if it will be a panel sign. Panel signs, unless they are part of a logo, are not permitted. And this is something that we have reviewed in various projects, Mumbai Market included, and the T-Mobile sign on Ann Arbor Road as well, that was freestanding letters as part of that plaza. So, with, with those details, it's recommended that the planning commission approve the requested sign, provided that the letters are freestanding and that the applicant ensures that the projection is no greater than 12 inches. Thank you.
The applicant here? Want to step up?
Yeah, James Upton, I'm the owner of AAA Sign.
Uh-huh.
I was here in the spring doing this same type of review. Yes, the letters are all freestanding. I thought the photograph pretty much indicates that. The projection is like nine inches. I didn't have that on. It's simple to just, I'll just make that notation when I go into City Hall.
Okay.
Well, only one more question I have. Since the submittal, my customer has asked me if he changes a color, is that something that will hold up this process?
Well, what color, it's, it's red color right now, is in the rendering we got?
I made a point.
Oh, it's gone to white or, white with black.
Make sure the couple...
You can pass that out.
We can pass this down.
Oh.
Everybody got, I'm good, no, that's the old one.
Harp took three.
No.
Oh. Do you want to talk about white?
Is it, are the, is this sign lit?
Yes.
Rear lit, both, both the wa, walk-in?
Correct. There are individual letters, each letter is illuminated with LED modules on the interior.
Okay.
Well, on the color, if I can just remind the commission of something with the, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, Mumbai Market?
Mumbai.
Mumbai Market?
Yes.
That, you know, that was white, and in the past, the commission is, has sort of not liked the color white, because it's very bright, almost glaring. And if you drive by that at night, you'll notice that that is really white, and it's something that we probably should have caught, and we didn't, but it's something for the commission to consider now, what your feelings are about white.
Yeah, the Applied Fitness Solutions sign too was basically white, I believe, with letters in front of it. But in the years past, in the planning commission, we've been pretty adamant about not allowing white panel signs, just because they're glaringly bright.
Well, number one, it's not a panel sign. This is not a panel sign.
Yeah.
But the...
Just white letters.
...sign is very bright.
It's up to, I'm just throwing that out there for consideration.
Yeah.
Is it technically feasible to have the white at a slightly lower illumination than the red?
I could probably put less modules in there.
Put what?
Less modules.
So, so Laura, it, well, if they added that second line here, is that still the size requirement? Can you just tell from looking at the sign now, but he'll have to do a revised?
They're, they're the same dimension.
The original one's got that, it's just red.
It's the same dimensions.
That's why I didn't, okay, got it, okay.
It's a...
So, and it's still the same dimensions, 12 inches?
Yep.
I don't know, from my perspective, I kind of like the two-tone color of the red and the white, that, I, as, as opposed to all red. That's just a matter of, of personal preference, though.
Well, if there are no other comments, we're open to a motion. You will have to submit, you know, the revised plan to Ms. Howell, and then there can be administrative approval if it meets the requirements that she had outlined in her report.
Oh, correct, yeah, there's no problem there. I didn't know there was any confusion, they all look like individual letters of me on that building, I mean, I guess next time I will just write it down, you know, these are all individual freestanding letters.
So any, any motion of approval tonight would be subject to revised sign plan to be administratively approved.
So, like, what I need at this point is to submit a drawing with that projection noted.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
And the wording saying that they're all individual freestanding letters.
That's it.
That's all you have to do.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a good evening.
And address the color.
Pardon me?
And address the color change. Correct?
Right, right, yeah, I'll submit the, the new drawing.
Yep.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 2297-0618, subject to the conditions that a final drawing shows that the sign does not project more than 12 inches, and that and that the sign is an individual letter sign, and that the sign can be, both the urgent care part can be red and the walk-in clinic part can be white.
And subject to administrative approval?
Subject to administrative approval.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and support of our Commissioner Postel granting approval, subject to said conditions and administrative approval for application twenty-two ninety-seven dash zero six one eight. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Yeah, you too. Okay, moving on to application twenty-two ninety-six dash zero six one eight. The Centennial Home Group, the Verona Park Development.
Thank you. The application before you is for a site plan of Verona Park, which was formerly the, known as the Edinburgh Estates Residential Development. This development is for fourteen detached, single-family residential units. And was, the site was granted a cluster housing option by the Board of Trustees this past May. So, just a couple months ago. So, the next step in the process after receiving that approval option is to come to the planning commission for site plan consideration. The final site plan is a recommendation then to the Board of Trustees, who will ultimately review the plan and all the legal documents associated with the cluster housing option, the master deed, the bylaws, the cluster housing agreement. So, the, the proposed site plan has been modified slightly since the concept for the option was proposed earlier this spring. And the, the overall recommendation from planning this evening is to grant tentative site plan approval for the project, with the understanding that there are some outstanding items to revise before seeking final site plan consideration by the commission. And also, a couple determinations by the planning commission this evening to provide guidance to the applicant moving forward. So, I'll cover the outstanding items in the, the planner's report, knowing that these would need to be made prior to final site plan approval. So, in terms of the dimensional requirements of the cluster housing option, the site is in compliance with those. There's just a couple setback, setbacks that are proposed that do require the commission's consideration and a waiver, if you will. It's not, it's not a variance to them, but there's some latitude that the planning commission has to apply, site-specific. The first is that the maximum building setback is required to be fifty feet from any perimeter property line. The commission has the authority to reduce this up to thirty-five feet, provided that there's justification submitted by the applicant. In this case, the applicant did provide some justification during the cluster housing process, at least allude to the fact that the reason for the perimeter setback is that they can kind of cluster some of those units in closer and preserve that southern boundary of forested area along Edinburgh Drive. You'll see that units five and seven on the site plan. Let me see if I can zoom in. Bit on here. So, it's units five and seven towards the end of the cul-de-sac that are shorter than the, the fifty-foot setback. So, that's what they would, that's what the modification to that perimeter yard setback would be for, about five feet on each. The second dimensional modification is a twenty-foot setback from the cul-de-sac. So, the edge, the back of the curb to the front of each residential unit is required to be fifty-two feet in a cluster housing option. But the planning commission has the option of reducing this to twenty-five feet, which is, I believe, what the applicant has proposed in their site plan package. This dimension is not noted, but it looks like when you scale it, that that is the dimension. So, that would just need to be clarified. But twenty-five is the minimum, and that's what they are requesting. We've approved as a commission twenty-five feet in other circumstances, such as the woods, cluster housing option, and some of the Andover projects. You know, it's understandable when you're trying to create a closer knit community and preserve natural features and not oppose to a, a shorter setback from a planning standpoint, as long as there's diversity in the unit typology so that it doesn't end up looking just like a drive, a cul-de-sac street with the same monotonous, very close to the road, front building appearance. Otherwise, that, that does not, that does not create a, an interesting or a quality neighborhood. And then lastly, under item number two, outstanding items, the sheet, sheet two of the site plan states that signage is not part of the site plan package. But then on one of the landscaping sheets, there's some conceptual entry signage along Beck Road. There's no issue with the signage along Beck Road. As our zoning ordinance reads though, signage for residential development, such as this, require planning commission approval. So, if the applicant does not seek your approval at this stage in the process, they would actually have to come back before the building department could issue their permits. So, to avoid something like, you know, that down the road and spare you that hassle, if you're interested in signage, I would seek to have that on the plans and ask for that as, as part of the approval. But as far as the planning commission's determination, those two, those two setbacks, the perimeter and then from the, the interior street, will be needed this evening in order to move the project forward with tentative. Another outstanding item is just the updated tree, tree survey. Jack Carnahan did provide a preliminary tree survey from, I believe, the engineer who worked on this project previously. And was, I was under the impression that an updated one was in the process. If necessary, once that survey is produced, replacement trees would be needed or payment in lieu. And in terms of the pedestrian access and circulation, the plan has been revised now to include a sidewalk around the, the interior cul-de-sac. You can see here on the south side of the road, and it runs around the cul-de-sac and then up to the pedestrian pathway that goes north to the detention pond. It does stop here between units two and three. And it does not continue to head east where the mailboxes are located. The recommendation is that the sidewalk be provided to that amenity, at least for the residents. The applicant has also provided the, very similar pedestrian and amenity open space treatment as, as provided during the, the cluster housing option planning process with the pergola and a bench and a second bench. There are some recommendations in here that maybe there's seating provided actually under the pergola as opposed to outside of it so that it can be a functional space. The consideration of this amenity is, is recommended before the applicant comes back for final site plan approval, just to make sure that it's, you know, a usable investment that they're making. In terms of landscaping, there's just a couple more minor comments. Expansion of the landscaping along Beck Road to meet the zoning ordinance minimum. Recommendation that a few trees, shade trees are provided around this area so that it's not just in the hot direct sun for those who do use it. And provision of some additional vegetation and infill vegetation and extension of that berm along the north boundary of the property. From the public comments that we heard during the, during, during the, the cluster housing option process, you know, residents are concerned about the buffering in, in this area, especially to the north here where you have a property owner that now has five or six units along its property line. So, one of those items that the board requested was enhanced buffering along the property lines. And in, in the north, there's a small berm. Recommendation is that that would be enlarged. The parking is fine. There's at, at least three parking spaces per, per dwelling unit. Just the, the actual width of the driveway should be dimensioned on the plan and, and no larger than twenty feet in width. And then as far as the building design and architecture, we will need to see additional drawings and details on those and to ensure variety and quality materials and to meet the, the zoning ordinance standards. As far as exterior lighting, they are providing one light pole here in the middle of the cul-de-sac with some landscaping, and then there's a bollard lighting here, a bollard lighting down here, and a bollard lighting here. It's just recommended that maybe instead of the bollard lighting in this area by the mailboxes, that the same decorative light post that's proposed here would be continued to have a little bit of continuity. Maybe there's two or it's incorporated somehow into the lighting for the entrance areas, but just a little bit more consideration be given to how that treatment appears. And then, of course, you know, final site plan review would be contingent on all outside agencies and engineering approval. The fire department report is also attached in your packet, and they have found no deficiencies with the proposed plan. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
What is a pond overlook consist of?
This is their proposed pond overlook. You can.
I'm talking to the right of that though, that one. G.
Oh, G, this is, I believe, a bench? Let me zoom out a little bit. This is, this is what they're proposing here for a, a similar treatment. I'm not sure if, if Dave Richmond, if you know, if this is a higher elevation or not what they're proposing there, if that translates to an outlook.
It'll be above the pond. Right now, I don't know how far, but it would be above the pond.
Well, it's not in the pond.
It's outside of the pond, so it has to be above the pond.
Yeah, but I mean, like, as, as far as a true view, I think that, you know, as, as the review letter alludes to, to kind of concentrate the actual amenities in the path, that's probably what would be used the most, you know, by anyone who's walking their dog or coming out here. It might get kind of marshy or messy and geese, so.
Let me ask, or remind me, I, I know it was discussed, why the sidewalk was originally terminated there rather than going to the mailboxes?
I'm not sure why it, it doesn't continue. Previously, the sidewalk was not proposed. Then it was proposed for just a portion of this. Now, it has been wrapped around the cul-de-sac and meets the path to the north. I have a feeling that extending this sidewalk is going to push units one and two even further back.
Well, let's ask the applicant that when we get to that point. You wanna move on to the engineering report at this point?
Thank you, commissioners. Dave Richmond, Spalding D. Decker Engineers. We have reviewed the tentative site plan for conformance with Plymouth Township Engineering Standards, and we've found just four minor things that need to be added to the plans. And that can be done during final site plan approval. And those are just notes, just some additional information for the location map. Specify whether it's, there's a hundred-year floodplain on the site and wetlands. It's just formalities, notes that need to be added to the plan. So, we therefore recommend tentative site plan approval based on those, on it being addressed during final site plan approval.
Any applicants here? Whoever wants to come up and talk to us? Okay.
Hello, my name is Felino Pasqual. I'm the landscape architect. I believe normally Jack would be here, Jack Carnahan represented, but he's out of the country at the moment. So, I'd be happy to answer any question that you might have regarding this project.
Okay. Well, so, I, I don't know if you, can you address anything about the tree survey? Do you know what the status is?
Well, the tree survey, we actually got the tree survey preliminarily based on that. I believe that replacement will be required. And I wanna say that currently, the preliminary estimate's about a hundred fifty inches. So, if you take that equation and divide it by three, roughly, we probably have to provide about fifty-plus trees in terms of replacement. And with that being said, you know, the concern with the buffering, you know, I wanted to utilize those replacement towards, you know, creating the buffer to the, you know, to the north and, and to the street. Where, where there's some, you know, where, we should probably sight it a little bit and sort it's placed properly, probably towards the north and the west, you know? Edinburgh looks like a lot of the vegetation are being saved there. I would also probably add additional trees along that Edinburgh to kind of complement it. You know, maybe some ornamentals that kind of add some colors and things like that. And some evergreen trees where I might think it might be spotty. I think evergreens is important because in the winter times, it adds a little greenery and things like that. So, at least, that is our, that would be my approach. And I believe Laura, I, I didn't know if I, did, did they not submit a preliminary landscaping plan with this package?
It's on the screen.
It's on the screen behind you.
Oh, okay, there it is. Yeah. So, conceptually, this, this is the plan that we're kind of running with. You can kind of see the evergreen trees, which are kind of the explosions, and then it's complemented with trees and some ornamental trees. And then as you go south toward Edinburgh, I've added some additional evergreen trees to kind of create this, this, this green throughout. So, you could see there's quite a bit of extensive landscaping we're proposing with regard to the project and, and screening as well, so.
Okay. Can you tell us any, any reason about the sidewalk, why it was terminated, where it was?
That's a good question. I believe, I, you know, this is only fourteen lots, and, and everything is really to create this kind of a close-knit community. Personally, there's enough paving. The road is wide, you know, complies with county requirements. Adding another sidewalk just adds more paving to it. And we provided a sidewalk that kind of circulated, kind of threw out, that would cover the whole area. But we think, we feel that might be necessary for pedestrian traffic. Extending that out? I guess if we need to do that, we will do that. But, you know, to me, it seems like, you know, there's, there's a lot of paving already, you know? And I, we're trying to create more greenery and, and, and with regards to the setback, you know, the other op, the, the other thought is also, you know, the cars parked in front of it, twenty-five feet, the additional five-foot sidewalk, it just adds more, more paving, I guess.
Well, the parking raises another question that I have. On this, you know, we got the report from the fire department. Do you know if they're gonna permit parking on both sides of the street?
No, I don't, I don't believe they will.
It'll be one side, yeah.
So, there'll just be one, parking will only be on one side?
If, if, if they even allow that. I haven't heard otherwise, but I know in some cases, they won't. I haven't heard otherwise, but I know in some cases they won't.
So what happens if, you know, resident, and these are going to be marketed mostly to empty nester people, type people. And so let's say they have their family over for Thanksgiving dinner. And maybe it's a small family. They might have, you know, four or five families that come along. Where are they going to park their cars? Because they're only, they could put two cars in the garage and probably two cars in the driveway. So then what happens?
They
Guess so.
If parking is not allowed at all on the court, then they would either not obliged by that, probably realistically, or they would park somewhere else and come in together or ask these neighbors driveway.
Or it's a good excuse to not invite some of your family.
Or they could park on Edinburgh and go to grandma's house through the woods.
Over the hill.
Over the hill and through the woods.
And you don't know what the mailboxes are going to look like, do you?
Not at the moment, no. There's only, I mean, there's only 14 cluster.
Right.
Yeah.
So will they be, because I've seen some where they just put them on a wooden stand and, you know, then it looks on slightly. Or later those residents have to get together and rebuild it, so something
Yeah, with 14 units, I mean, with 14 units, I, you know, I don't think it's going to be that big. And I think that could be done, you know, decoratively.
Right. Of some, me myself, I'm more concerned about the permanency of it, you know, something that's low maintenance, that's not going to fall apart in three or four years.
For me, on the sidewalk, I still find an inconsistency. You only have 14 units, so either you need a sidewalk or you don't. But if you decide you need a sidewalk, not having the sidewalk go to the mailboxes where somebody's going to go every day, it doesn't make sense. It's one way or the other, you know.
Then we will extend the sidewalk.
Because, and I think it's questionable whether it's needed at all with 14.
Yeah, and that's my point. To me, I would rather lose the sidewalk and, I mean, I don't know how much traffic they're going to have here. You know, with 14 units. With 14 units, you're going to know all your neighbors. And I don't think they're going to be going, you know, more than, you know, they're not going to be going 20 miles an hour and just start a cul-de-sac. You know, and I think personally for me, I would rather not have the sidewalk, I mean, you know.
I think it should be one or the other, but half and half, it just doesn't have any logic to me.
What do the other commissioners feel?
I think the sidewalk going to the pond is wonderful, okay? I think the sidewalk going around the court is, as the landscape architect suggested, is more, you know, we don't want more concrete. I don't think we want more concrete. I'm more concerned about the parking that you just mentioned. That was the first thing I wrote down was, there's no accommodation for guest parking. Really, it's non-existent. What is the past practice with cluster options? I've not, I've usually seen some guest parking of some sort.
Well, you know what, it's an issue that we really hadn't discussed much. But then I have witnessed myself on other clustered housing where they, people move in, there's parking on both sides of the street. And then after a little while, the fire department comes in and posts no parking on one side of the street. So I wanted to raise that issue here. I'm a little more sensitive to it now that I've witnessed where it's happened in other places on the township. I don't know.
So it's not part of, there's nothing in the cluster option that suggests that if you're going to, you know, per unit, there should be X number of guest parking spots, right? I mean, there's nothing, never has been, right? Is there some sort of school of thought or is there some sort of? Laura, I guess I'd address that to you. In most condominium developments, I mean, I used to live in Beacon Hollow. We had quite a few guest parking spots. I mean, there probably, for each building, there was one or two spots. Now, a building would be four units, so in here you have 14, so you would think you would have maybe six guest parking spots. So I don't know.
Well, as far as the zoning ordinance stipulates, only two places are required for a single-family residential dwelling unit. So the fact that there's already a garage with these units satisfies that requirement, you know, legally for compliance with our ordinance. In terms of practicality, Dave Richman just mentioned that even if they were to park on one side of the street, you know, this is true, the driveway spacing doesn't really allocate much space for on-street parking. The other concern or obstacle is that with a cul-de-sac, you know, there likely would only be parking on the on the portion of the court that's in front of units one, two, 14, 13, 12, 11. And this is, this is one of the best practices I think that we're seeing in residential development is that for that reason, cul-de-sacs are not ideal. And being connected to a larger network, whether you can park further down the street or not is optimal.
Well, the other thing that restricts it is the driveways themselves. There's not that much space between the driveways to put a vehicle. And then on sheet two, I'm looking at one, two, three, four, I think, well, three, I guess. No parking fire lane signs.
Correct.
And that's on the north side of the street? Yep, has it right here.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, obviously, that's the consideration. There's not going to be any parking on the street on the north side. And the assumption is it's only going to be on the south side. That's just an assumption, but that's the way the plan reads at any rate.
That may very well, you know, apply and the fire department may have no qualms about it. In terms of the fire department requirements, we all have the same amount of information for us. But it's something that we can check in, check in with. Yeah, even if that were to be the case, that doesn't preclude the tentative site plan approval from going forward. If modifications needed to be made, they could be made prior to final to accommodate that.
That would be useful information to know though in the future because we've gotten so many cluster housing options. You know, what is the standard? How wide does the road have to be to allow parking? Because if other cluster housing options come before us, then we can address that earlier in the process.
The width, the width that they're proposing for the road is a standard subdivision road width. It's the same width whether it's a cluster housing option or a subdivision.
What is that, like 60 feet or?
Well, the right-of-way width, but the pavement width itself, they've gone 30 feet back a curb to back a curb. Typically in a subdivision, in a lot of areas, you even see 27 feet back a curb to back a curb. And they allow parking on the street at those locations as well. So they have 30 feet back a curb to back a curb, which would allow for parking on one side of the street.
What's different in this cluster housing option, I think, is echoing what Dave mentioned earlier and what you said as well, Chairman Sobolski, is that the magnitude of the units on the site with the driveway spacing, it's not as if it's a, you know, I'm on Baywood in the township and the driveways are, you know, 60, 70 feet apart and you can fit several cars in. It's a different scenario. As to the proposed sidewalk for the Brona Court, if the applicant did not want to do a sidewalk around the court, I would not have any objection to that, provided that there would be another amenity on the site. When we started this process, I strongly recommended that not even a fully impervious trail be provided, but just some sort of walking network similar to what was proposed, or what is proposed with Andover Ponds and the sort of the crushed limestone, I believe, treatment that they use in the national parks. That's what they're proposing for their trail around their site. If the applicant were to propose that, I would be in full support of that around Edinburgh Drive that looped around the units and not do an internal sidewalk.
Could you repeat that again? You wanted to do a gravel around?
Around the units. This was part of the the project that was discussed earlier in the cluster housing option. If there were to be a path that would loop through and around the southern development, there was concern over the removal of trees.
Right.
You know, the national parks, the county parks, the local municipality parks, they can all do this, you know, with skill without having to remove too many for a small walking path that would come back, just to provide the
I guess my thought to that is this, I mean, I'm just talking out loud here. You know, keep in mind that in terms of there's, you know, setbacks, 40 feet, you know, creating a gravel path looping around the rear of these units to create an amenity, which I believe, I mean, to me, I don't know if the residents will really utilize that because I think the thought here is it's an empty nester development. So, you know, most of these that they're marketing towards will be, you know, they're downsizing from a larger home and they want to stay within the community. And so, you know, you have the golf course on the other side and you're providing sidewalks. And I think there's, you know, this is such a, it's five acres and it's such a small enclave that I'm not quite sure I would almost value preserving some of these woods versus the creating the gravel path, you know. The whole, in terms of usage, I don't know how well that would be used, I guess.
I remember that discussion, you know, you had mentioned that before and then the question was the tree removal. Plus, there's quite a large elevation distance, elevation grade right there. You know, going closer to Edinburgh, you know, from where this court is, at least it looks that way to me when I've driven by that site.
That also adds another layer of maintenance for the homeowners, which is going to be the gift that keeps on giving.
And would I want somebody, I'm sitting in a patio, somebody walking through my backyard? You know, that's another.
Well, I don't think it would be right through someone's backyard and I really would strongly, you know, urge the commission to think about, for this project, I believe, you know, we've kind of established that there will be an internal sidewalk. But that other residential developments in, you know, surrounding communities are providing amenities for their residents. And while this may be an aging-in-place community that's planned for the next 10 years, the demographics are going to change and while we'll continue to make this neighborhood viable for those who live in it in the future. And just to have someone, the golf course may be nearby, there might be amenities across Beck Road. But for someone to actually walk across Beck Road or have to get in their car, just to take their dog for a walk, you know, it doesn't make a neighborhood attractive in the long run for quality.
You know, the other challenge is the pathway between number two and three, there's a 24-foot separation. And if you were to loop it around, all the other separations are 12 to 15 feet. So it creates a really tight space to bring that walkway back to the main, Brona Court again.
I don't know where you'd do it.
I wouldn't either.
Well, I think the only walkway that I think what Laura was talking about initially when we first looked at this development was up closer to Edinburgh. If you had the trail running from back or from the front of the property, say from the east end of unit 14, closer to the road and then cut back and went west behind the units that are on the south side of the building, I don't know, I mean, it's but how much, how much space is there between Edinburgh and the rear of those units to the south? What is the setback?
Dimension on two, it says to the
You have 86 and a half feet in the front, right? So that's a pretty decent distance, I think.
Yeah.
So if you came 20 feet off of Edinburgh and you had the trail running like here, at least you have something, I mean.
Yeah, I guess. It just, it seems to me that people are not going to go, want to go take a walk through their neighbor's backyard.
Well, but that's on the other side.
Other than you.
There's a berm that There's a, there's a berm right behind those south properties?
Yes, we are proposing a south berm.
How big is that berm? How high?
That, I don't know if it's indicated in the engineer plan or not. I'm going to surmise maybe at least, it's got to be at least maybe three feet based on the corners I'm looking.
10 foot according to the geography.
Right, I'm talking, there's, on this drawing, there's a decided berm that runs the entire length of the property on the south side. Are you saying that's there already?
That must have been, it's being proposed.
Yeah, it's being proposed, so I'm asking how high is it?
I don't have that answer. I'm going to surmise it's got to be at least a minimum.
Based on the width they have shown, it can't be any more than three feet high.
Three feet high.
Two or three?
Yeah, it can't be any higher than that at all with the width that's shown there.
Okay, that, thank you, that answers my question.
I could be wrong here, but probably part of that too is maybe for drainage because I see the catch basin in the rear here for the storm.
That's what I think it's more there for, is to block the drainage from running down to Edinburgh so that they can contain their rear yard drainage in their storm system, because they have a storm system running through there. And that's not an uncommon thing for us to do, is to put a small berm in there to direct the flow to the
Away.
To the catch basins.
Yeah.
I don't know, if we kept, if we kept the interior sidewalk and just extended it to the entrance of the subdivision or, you know, the development, then they would have, actually, it's a longer walk because they could walk along the sidewalk on back if they chose to do it.
Which ends what?
It ends on whatever this development, the length or the, you know, the frontage of it, that's it. But, you know, gives them a walk.
Commissioners, the other option that is available to the developer, if you found appropriate, would be to not do the not do the walking path at all, not do the internal sidewalk and to do a payment in lieu, which those funds would go into a larger account with the township for improvements that would be for the general public at a later date.
Or actually, we use that money to fill in sidewalks elsewhere in the township.
But there should be some, this is a cluster housing option because they're receiving 14 units out of the site. And without the amenity, without a benefit, it's just a dense neighborhood.
How many units, do you remember, could they have on here without the cluster?
But we are providing some pergolas in the path and the bench and water feature, the pond that's normally not typically done. So, I mean, isn't that considered as an amenity?
The detention pond is not, no.
Nobody in regards to like the fountain and maybe some uplighting on it and things like that?
Not as far as the fountain. I believe that nine or 10 units was the max that could be developed with a parallel plan on the site.
So they're getting four additional sites, so we're saying, what are you giving this cluster development in exchange for four extra units?
At least.
But they are also preserving some trees, which is something we have to give them credit for, you know.
They are, which I do think is in part because of the concerns that we heard from the residents about this, you know, preservation of this area and protection for the adjacent homes.
Did we get exceedance to the Did we get exceedance to the extension of that northern berm? Because I believe the trustees actually asked for that. You know, they have this small berm.
Yes.
That's on the north side and they wanted it extended further to the west.
Yes, and that's one of the outstanding items is you can see it right here, this is, this is the length of the berm.
Yeah, that's the reason I was asking, I don't know if I heard anything about that from the applicant.
Yeah, but we need to be extended.
We can extend that berm. I'll, I have to verify with the engineer, make sure, make sure in terms of grading, it'll work and things like that. I see there's some drainage there. And as you could see, I think part of the reason they are extending the berm, I think, was to create, to buffer the neighborhood from the north, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, and that, that leads into my memory of this property because I drive by it quite a bit, that the most extensive foliage is on the south side.
Correct.
The north side is very sparse. So that's where you're going to fill in the most of stuff.
You can see if you...
Yeah, I see, I see your plan.
It's quite a bit of landscaping that we are, you know, proposing at that location. And you know, you guys have a very extensive, you know, landscape ordinance, which is kind of nice, you know, for change, at least in my perspective.
For a landscape architect, it would be.
So you have, you know, you have 12 feet evergreen to vary it and I think that's, you know, that's great. So we can do a very nice job on the screening that's required. You know, plus with the wood, the replacement required, you know, we can, we can provide that screening adequately, more than adequately, so.
Laura, are they talking about a gate?
No.
No, no gate?
Not at this point.
Okay.
I did want to comment that I like that on the property right now, there is a sign that shows what the plan looks like. I think that's really helpful to the neighboring residents for the community.
Yep.
And that would be nice if other developers would do that. On the site, there's a, the site plan is posted.
Is he intent to have signage out, branding signage out on Back Road?
Well, there's, there's a, conceptually, there was a sign that I, that we kind of proposed. I think that's still the intention. It's stone. And with regards to the lighting, I believe we are suggesting a decorative wall, pier mounted lighting on it that would kind of tie in with the light that we are suggesting at the cul-de-sac island. You know, it'll be a tip, a wall mounted light, kind of low. So if you kind of, because you zoom out to the signage. So the sign we're proposing is actually a combination of stone and brick. And then there's with some limestone cap. I've shown an elevation that would be sheet two.
Yeah, I really like that entrance.
So, just like the other side, if you guys recall the other side of the development, opposite of that, you know, we, I, we're suggesting kind of hedge, you know, boxwood. And then obviously, behind the box would probably be some hydrangeas or roses. And then it's, you know, the evergreen trees in the backdrop to kind of frame it. And then obviously ornamental plants with some color in the spring and things like that. So that's kind of the direction we're going. You know, this, these homes are going to be, you know, in the upper, in the 500 range. So you got to provide something that's a million dollar, you know, even though it's, so.
Are you going to do uplighting for the, where actually says Verona Park, so it's a...
That would be it. That would be the only location uplighting would be. But we are suggesting a stand at the pier with the stone.
I didn't, I didn't understand the jump you just made from 500 to a million dollars.
Well, what I'm saying is, if, if you have a, if, if, you know, to me, as a landscape architect, you got to, the entrance is the icing, the cake, you know? If you're selling, it better look like a million dollars, even though you're selling, you know, so that when you come in, it's a million dollar, you know, you feel like...
Figuratively.
Your presentation, yeah.
By the time they, they furnish it and do all the rest, it's not going to be a million, but it's going to be partway there.
So anyway, you're, you understand that we definitely are looking for additional berming on the north side?
The, the south, the north side.
North side, yeah, not the, not the south side.
I will, yeah, I will...
Make note of that.
Just verify that with the engineers that we can, we can provide that. It, I just want to make sure before I say yes.
Sure, sure. I'm not, I'm not asking you to say yes, I just...
And if, if not, we will, we will...
You got to come back for final anyway, so.
Right.
And I would love to see, when you come back for final, what the materials on that entrance feature are going to look like, that some of the actual material...
You mean the wall, yeah.
You know, some of the actual materials or pictures of something that some, the developer has done before that looks somewhat similar to that. So that we can get an idea. I mean, I like the look of it, the way it's drawn, but sometimes the way it's drawn, it doesn't translate to the actual...
Well, something that might be comparable to that might be a project that I worked on, Denton and west of Geddes, a Pulte project.
Okay.
Called The Grand View. It's got stone piers with a light. This might be a little scaled down a little bit.
Yeah, smaller.
But it's, it's basically the similar concept with the stone.
So it's on Geddes?
Geddes and Denton, just, just...
Oh, Geddes and Denton?
Yes, so...
Okay.
That would be one.
I know where that is. Is that, is that north of Geddes?
That would be on the west side and the south side of Geddes. Another thing that I...
On the south side of Geddes?
Yes, the south, the south side of Geddes, that's...
And west of Denton?
West of Denton. And another one, but it's brick, would be obviously the MI Homes or Pinnacle Homes that's on Five Mile and Back Road. But that one is brick.
Yeah.
But this is, the concept is still the same, it's, it's the, you know, it's just brick.
Yeah.
This, this one is stone.
Okay.
Well, getting back to the sidewalk, I'm, I'm more inclined to keep the, is my opinion, the internal sidewalk and extend it out to the mailboxes.
Yeah, I think that's where we have to go. I visually looking at this plan, trying to figure out where the entrance to this, initially, I had that thought process too. It would be great to have a nice little path through these, because there's, like I say, it's 80, 80 feet. It's, it's, it's quite a bit. But I don't see how physically you get access to it.
And where do you go?
And where do you go once you got it, you know? So I think in order to, to satisfy the amenity thing on the, on the cluster housing option, you got to have that sidewalk and it's got to go down to the mailboxes. Makes no sense to me whatsoever that it stops and doesn't go down to where your residents are going to go every day.
And on the pergola that you're, you know, that's near the pond area, you can make sure that there's electrical service to that, there's another cluster housing that has, you know, similar feature and they're putting electrical work in there. If they wanted to have a little neighborhood, summer picnic, that kind of thing, that adds to them being able to use that space. Do you have any idea how big that will be?
What I'm suggesting is, is we have to be careful because again, you know, this is a very tight space, it's not wide open.
Right, right.
So in terms of scale wise, I think it might be maybe 10 by 10. In terms of height, maybe about eight feet where the, the beams are. So it might be nine feet, you know, by the time you put the, the joint up there, so...
How does the amenity requirement work again? What is that? How does that work?
Well, as, as part of the cluster housing option, there is to be some sort of recreational open space, community benefits.
Kind of a general, a general, yeah, it's pretty general.
And I think that in this case, putting, putting the applicant on the spot this evening to make a decision about the sidewalk or a path or just a payment in lieu if they feel that that would serve the development better, I would recommend that that not be required for tentative site plan approval and that they could go back and discuss it with the developer and see what route they really felt was best for this and then propose that to the commission.
What's your feelings on the size of the pergola? And how's that compared? Do you know what the size was at the, the other development, the Menard development?
I don't remember offhand. I think Walt Menard's development may have had a longer but thinner pergola. I think it, his was at least 12 feet in length, if not 16.
Might want to look that up and maybe give some direction to the...
Yeah, we'll, we'll check on the size of what was done before and...
And it's scale, and scale wise, that it works for the space here.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, I think what we're showing here is the 10 by 10.
What you're showing is a rectangle, though.
Yes, just a 10 by 10.
Wouldn't that be a square?
The, the, the image is a rectangle, but the, I'm sorry, the plan view is a 10 by 10 based on the, on the pave circle.
I think the photos are inspirational, correct, at this point?
Yeah, just, just an image.
Yep.
And does the commission have any issue with the setbacks that were at the beginning of the report?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I don't have any.
Are you two folks in the audience, are you here, do you have a comment on this? Is there... Oh, okay, all right. Okay, good. Any other questions, issues? Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 2296-0618 with the, specifically with the item one setbacks being, or variances, or I don't want to use the word variance.
Modifications?
Yeah, the, the non, yeah, with the setbacks as shown on, I think it's five, unit five and seven being approved as presented. And then the inclusion of the extra berm, if possible, on the north side of the, of the property, the inclusion of an internal sidewalk that goes all the way around the, the road and the other items that are listed in the planner's report and the engineering report.
Does that motion come with the option of discretion by the applicant to discern the, the amenity for final?
I would not be in favor of that.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to grant tenant of site plan approval subject to set conditions 2296-0618. All in favor, signify.
Question?
Yes.
So, because, because I actually disagree with that, I'm, I am in favor of allowing them some opportunity to explore that, particularly, I mean, they, these guys have been really good to work with and they've done everything that we've asked. And I, but if we vote no, what does that mean procedurally?
I, I think, you know, let's, we'll have a discussion on this. So, you know, I guess, me personally, I would favor putting the sidewalk out or making a payment to the, to the township. If that gives, if that gives away an amenity, then what, what would it be? What else would we add to it? Regardless of that, there should be a sidewalk, I think, that leads to the pergola so that people have access to it.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
No, he said an internal sidewalk all the way around.
Internal sidewalk all the way.
Yep. It, to me, here's, here's the thing. We're at tentative and they can come back and give us reasons why at final, why they disagree with that. This is not final approval. All we're saying is that we're suggesting that that amenity, that is an amenity that allows them, that we vote, that, that gives us something for the cloud, cluster housing option that we don't, that we need in order to, in order to justify providing them with the cluster housing option. And agree or disagree, that's, that's your, that's your right certainly. And, but that doesn't, because it's tentative approval, it is not cast in stone certainly. And the commission can, given the proper argument, change its mind at final.
Is maybe the direction to the applicant then that at a minimum, if an internal sidewalk is, is proposed, if that's the avenue that they decide to go with, then it must reach the mailbox? But that there are other options available if the applicant determines they would like to present that to us at final? Is, is that the direction?
That's the direction I would, I mean, that's what tentative means to me. It's not final. So just because we suggest that that happens, and I think we, we have a responsibility to adhere to the zoning ordinance, which says that if you're going to allow a cluster housing option, there are amenities which must be given to the residents in, in order to, to justify the extra housing on the site. And to me, a little sidewalk and a pergola don't get it. That's, that's just my opinion. And, and you can approve the motion or not approve the motion, have somebody else make a motion, that's fine, whichever you would, it would prefer.
So Laura, you know, on the amenity, so part of it, I mean, I, I agree with everything Bill had said, but I think one thing that needs to be, when we've had these cluster housing, not just this development, is they're, they're preserving the trees and that was something to, that was important to the existing neighbors. You know, so isn't that an amenity to these folks and their surrounding neighbors that they're still looking at some semblance of nature? If they had developed this in a traditional way, those trees would be gone.
Yes, but it's not unique to this property. So for instance, the Woods development with Jeff O'Brien and Walt Menard on Ann Arbor Road, they're preserving over an acre of their parcel. They could, they could develop that parcel with many more units. They're only proposing nine in order to really preserve the natural features. And in that development, they're also providing the connection to Litchfield for pedestrians and the pergola themselves with their internal street network. So it's not, it's not, the preservation of natural features is important and that's one of the components of the cluster housing option, but it doesn't act as a substitute for, for any other amenity that's provided by that density.
So what other amenity would there be other than a pergola and a sidewalk? What else, what kind of suggestions could we make to applicants for an amenity? Like try, like you just pointed out, the, the connection to the, a surrounding neighborhood and greater preservation of, of the land?
Yes, thinking of not just a, a cluster housing option, the redevelopment that we'll be seeing of the Phoenix Mill property, they're going to be doing some off-site improvements so that it's safer for pedestrians to, you know, cross Northville Road. That's an example of an amenity for those who would be using the site.
So maybe, could it be the walking path going back, maybe the sidewalk to the mailboxes, but then also? Maybe the sidewalk to the mailboxes, but then also a contribution to the township's fund?
It could be, another example would be the PUD for the proposed Courthouse Grill. I think a portion of that benefit is going to be the preservation of the, you know, a farmhouse original structure and either whether it's a historical marker or some other, you know, preservation and that designation of that structure and of that history. That's another amenity that's generated because it's a PUD.
Okay, well.
It seems like we've gone over this application multiple times and.
We have.
We can't come up with a way to have, I guess, a community amenity on the site. So maybe doing a little bit on the site with the pergola and the walking path to the bench. And then also a contribution to the fund might be a way so that we can move forward with projects, but also for future applicants that may come to us and say, well, this is all they had to do. We can say, yes, they did this and this, but also made a contribution.
Well, we did have that one applicant along Powell Road that all they were going to do is put the pergola up. And that was it. And that wasn't enough.
Well, and I think a contribution to what Bob said earlier is, I think it was Bob, connecting sidewalks, because we're not walkable, our township is not walkable.
Getting better.
It's getting better. And it will get better if we have more funds to contribute towards those amenities. So, yeah, we really do need to fill it in, because we can't take advantage of getting into the city, for example, so.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'll rescind my motion.
And you rescind your second.
Yeah.
So, who's going to make the motion?
Not me.
Commissioners, if I.
Too long of a day, I can't remember it.
If I may, I think it would be interesting as well if the applicant, at your firm, if, once the building elevations are determined, if there's a render or even just maybe a quick, like, sketch or watercolor of what the, you know, perspective down Verona Court would look like with the four-foot sidewalk, or if it was just all green, greenbelt and lawn. Because the visual, like, manifestation of having that sidewalk or not might change your attitude towards having the sidewalk there or not, depending on how the building architecture is and how close those homes really feel to the street. And the tree placement and all of that, I think it might be insightful, at least for final, if that's something that the applicant's team could produce.
Well, I think one of the other things that should be considered is, so let's say, we say, you've got to have this internal sidewalk. So that's going to, that's going to be a benefit for just this residence, there are 14 units. Where if they made a contribution to the township, they had that option. That would, that could potentially have impact over more than 14 people. Could be a connection of a sidewalk somewhere where kids can ride their bike or people could take a longer walk more safely.
Certainly.
I guess my concern, too, is you're adding 10 more feet on the 27-foot pavement that expands that. And that was really my concern, is that, you know, you have 27 feet wide paving already and you're adding two five-foot sidewalk on both sides. That just makes that almost like a runway, I guess, for a short cul-de-sac.
Well, and also in terms of sidewalks, I mean, I live in a community where we have no sidewalks. I mean, we, our streets are our sidewalks and everybody seems to get by quite fine. I mean, we have 88 homes in our development, everybody walks in the, on the asphalt. And I don't see where there's a benefit, a true benefit to having the sidewalk when you do have the road where you can walk the road. I mean, it's, and I think the benefit would be greater as a community if we contributed to something where more people could, because again, that's the, that's the the direction of the cluster housing option, is to be able to benefit. I mean, that's where I'm at, personally.
Would you be in favor of the two, the pergola and the cul-de-sac and then the walking path going out to the retention fund?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. I think that's, that's fine. That's something that residents would use. But in terms of the sidewalk, half the people don't use the sidewalks anyways, they walk on the street, even when there are sidewalks available, so.
Okay, so who's going to make this motion?
I can give it a try. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for application 2279-0218, site plan review CHO for Verona Park, that we grant tentative site plan approval contingent upon the items addressed in the planner's report and by the engineers. And that we give the applicant the option of presenting an alternative to the sidewalk around the development and in lieu of that, contribute to a township fund for greater improvement.
Second, moved by Commissioner Harbin, supported by Commissioner Dorchevitz to grant tentative site plan approval to 2296-0618, subject to said approval, or said conditions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
We have a no from Commissioner Pratt, but motion does carry. All right.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
And since there's no public here, I don't think there's anyone here that wishes to make any public comment. So, the two that might want to would left.
Short guy in the back.
So now we move to communications, information, and we'll lead off with the monthly report. Laura, it's all yours.
Thank you. In closing your packet is the May-June monthly, this is a dual monthly report on the planning and zoning activities and kind of just the status of the open projects and what myself and Jennifer have been working on. And all these projects also involve Dave Richmond for engineering as well. So, this is to help keep us on track with where we are with projects, but also just to make you aware of the different projects that are going on and where they stand. If there's any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them or to follow up at a later date. We're going to try following this format every month, moving forward. And then also in your packet is with a link to the city's master plan. John at the city had provided this information to us. And, you know, as the adjacent community, it's important that we just take a look at it and make sure that the policies and especially the land uses that are adjacent to the township are appropriate and are consistent with ours. There's certainly an opportunity for us to provide comment to the city if needed. I have the plan here on the screen. I think it's nice where they did these kind of sub-area plans and calling attention specifically to the type of development that they want to see in these areas. So they have one for the downtown, but also for the old village. I think this area is really attracting a different crowd and reinvestment. I think last night Supervisor Heisey said that the average age for this area is 29, which is quite different when compared to the rest of the city of Plymouth. If there's any comments about the plan, I'm happy to take them. We still have time, so if it's something that you'd like to think about, and we'll be meeting next Wednesday as well for our study session, we can talk about it further then. Or you can always email me with comments as well, and I'll provide them to the city.
Anything else, Laura?
Just that next week, we will be meeting on Wednesday and you'll be receiving your packets on Friday.
Will we be in this room or in that conference room?
I believe we're in this room and we'll push the tables together, like we did that one other time.
Okay.
And Alice, I'm not sure if you wanted to be, it's a study session, so I think traditionally, we haven't.
No, we haven't had. No, we usually don't.
Okay, thank you, though, Alice. If there's any questions about other projects, happy to answer them. We did have the board of trustees meeting last night where they reviewed the PUD option for the courthouse grill and that was approved for the option. So the applicant's next step is to move forward with the site plan and come before the commission. One of the things that the board was interested in and that the applicant agreed to verbally at the meeting is a historical resource inventory for that building. Trustee Dempsey was most interested and requested to be present for the walkthrough. So I think he'll be a bit involved and I know he brings a lot of knowledge on that subject. So I think that will be helpful in framing our discussion on how that building is incorporated into the project moving forward.
Go ahead.
I had a question about the food truck, Food Court. Have you been there? Do you know?
The Plymouth Parks and Eds?
Yeah.
They, he has reached out to me. As far as the final stamping regarding the planning commission outstanding items, he's met those long ago. I believe he's just been working with Wayne County.
Okay, so it hasn't started yet, it's not in operation yet, no?
They did, they cleared their scrub.
That's all they've really done. With any luck, they'll have Wayne County taken care of here in the next couple of weeks. We just talked to them this week about some of the comments they were asking us about the stormwater agreement and a few things like that. So I think they've got it to where they're pretty much have Wayne County taken care of. It's just getting that final letter and saying it's good.
I think our special use was, I think it's for one day, one year from when they actually got to open for business. I hope it's taking this long.
Yeah, I believe so.
Could expire before they get started.
Hopefully, they'll start soon. The Amazon facility over there is really coming along, too. So, I know that was kind of the intent to utilize that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Bill?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
We were throwing around this idea of making contributions to our general fund and the PUDs. Is there a standard we're talking about? Meaning, a developer thinks that maybe $1,000 does the trick? When we're really saying 10 times that does the trick?
It should be the value of, it started with sidewalks. And actually, and Bosch was a really good example of that. So what they would have spent to put in sidewalks is what they contributed.
The same applies for, like, replacement trees, for instance. The replacement cost for, you know, a three-inch caliber deciduous tree.
Yeah.
That has a value associated to it and that's what would go into the replacement.
You're right, John, I mean, it can't be arbitrary.
That can't be their decision.
So what about the value, what about the value, the increased revenue they get from selling the additional units? We gave the profit on those units and even we take a percentage of that.
I'm sure they'd be willing to turn over all their profits.
Not all, no, 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 it's a small percentage.
The other question I have is, when we talk about adding that sidewalk to Verona, does that mean it diminishes the road and compile that with, does that mean it counts towards a setback? If we were to put it, you talked about a five-foot sidewalk, I don't know why you'd need to make it five foot wide, but how does that impact parking and/or setback?
His parking is actually four feet, he just, I don't think was.
His sidewalk.
Yeah, I was very familiar with the plan, so it was an extra eight feet on either side. But he would need to preserve, it does impact the setback, because then you can't have parking overhang from the driveway into the sidewalk area. So you need to make sure that you could at least fit a 20-foot car well in excess with the garage door and not overhanging on that. So it, by adding that four-foot sidewalk, they did have to push the units out a little bit in all, well, northwest and south to make room for the sidewalk. So if they lose the sidewalk, they will actually maybe be able to have a little bit more yard space or additional trees preserved.
Other questions?
Other questions?
One question. I wonder about this process that we just went through with the guy in the C1. Would that not be applicable to the C1 on the western end? I mean, could he go for a use variance on the, for his property on?
The picnic basket?
On the picnic basket?
Yes, he technically could apply for that, but it wouldn't be recommended.
I think I know my answer, because one of the criteria the zoning board has to look at is whether or not it's self-created.
Yeah.
And that certainly is self-created.
I don't know, maybe a little, maybe kinda.
It might.
But it was zoned, C2 originally.
Yeah, that might get a little messy.
I just wondered about it, I just, I thought about it and I said, hmm. Because our solution is a little messy, too, so.
With the rezoning request?
No.
The tax amendment?
Yeah.
Well, I do think, you know, as Chairman Savalski, as you said, with the tax amendment, it's a minor amendment, but if it's kind of bringing that ordinance up to, you know, current provisions.
So what's this, what's this current status of that tax amendment?
We will also be discussing that at the study session. Not in any sort of decision capacity, but it will be a good opportunity for us to take a look at those ordinances. You'll have something in your packet and we can just have an informal discussion and see where we'd like it to go. If there is to be an amendment to it, it would be a minor change.
On the hotel, has the developer made contact and agreement with Home Depot on that parking? Or is that still circulating?
Dave Richmond and I have been working with the applicant weekly on this process. They are still trying to resolve the access issue. Today, they were at the township again and stated that they're meeting with Home Depot's legal counsel this Friday and will hopefully have an answer. It's understood that they're also looking now to the developer to the south, that property owner, to see if access can be acquired or not as an alternative means to present to the commission. But that's rather up in the air and we haven't received officially any revised plan that addresses the outstanding items from tentative.
How about the commercial development back in, since we're going down this road? Literally down the road. The construction equipment's still there?
Yes, yes, it is. He has not received final stamp and has now revised the plans considerably to where we, on the administrative committee, feel that he needs to come back to the planning commission for a revised site plan. And that is in the memo. So his next step is to file for a revised final site plan approval and come back before the commission, which I believe he intends to. which I believe he intends to for the August meeting.
Incidentally, just for the commission's edification, this thing that we talked about tonight won't come before the zoning board of appeals until September, because the, the application deadline has passed for the August meeting, so we won't, you know, we won't know anything about that until September.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, just a.
I move, oh, go ahead.
I just a brief thanks to Bob, I heard your comments about the commission when Dylan, my reappointment was up, so appreciate those comments.
And they actually passed, I did, that was the surprising part, that's the surprising part.
That's had a lot of people ask. So cool.
Yeah, well, we appreciate it, we certainly do, we try, we try hard. I move we adjourn.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Bobberina to adjourn the meeting at 9:14, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?